That's a really good sign. Make no mistake about it, the fire does continue to burn in some areas, but we're checking that up where we think there's going to be a problem. Coming over here into Foxtrot, we have this control line in place, or is going to be in place very soon, by the end of shift today, or possibly early tomorrow. Again, these equipment forces are working 24 hours a day. So, we have this contingency line here, you can look at that later, but also we're looking for alternate sites to cut this off and make it as small as possible to minimize resource damages. So, always keeping that in mind, always keeping safety in mind. It's gotten in here in the forks of the Klavi and the hole, and so that limits our control points when you look at the map. So, that's what's happening in Foxtrot coming around to Echo. We did some burning operations last night, and continuing today should have this tied in later on tonight. We're taking that real slow. The weather's just a little bit different out there today, so every day presents its own challenges. But, I just talked to our air attack before I came in here, and he said they're having no holding problems at this time. Got some really good reports of that. In Long Division Delta, it's starting to pick up some activity in here where there's some unburned pockets of green fuel in here, but again, no holding problems. So, in summary, by the end of shift tonight and early tomorrow, we hope to have all of this burnout all the way up to here in Division Echo, and that will turn all this black, which in effect would protect most of these communities in this area right here. So, stay tuned, we're not on the list yet. We feel really good about our actions so far, and so that's kind of what's going on there, so.
Thanks Marty. A couple other things I want to talk about, I'm going to turn it over in just a minute to, is it Spin Harney?
Yes sir.
I got the last name correct. And he's leading the structure group of fire engines that you've been seeing here for the last, I think, three days now, and nights. So, he's here to talk a little bit about that. But I also want to let you know that in coordination with this fire, there's been a lot of work going on on what we call the shaded fuel break that runs from actually north of Long Barn all the way down to Coppel Road. There's work going on again today, they're still working on it. They put dozer lines in through there to broaden it. The shaded fuel break is where they came in and took out all the undergrowth, lift the trees up so that you can see through it, so that if we have to, we can go in and do exactly what they did, we just put a dozer line in. If they hadn't done that work three, four, five years ago to establish that shaded fuel break, what took them one night shift to accomplish, night before last, would've taken three or four days to accomplish. So, it was well worth the expenditure, it was a good fire prevention effort, and it was taken advantage of. There's still some work going on, because there are some parts of that that you can't work with dozers and masticators, but have to get in with hand crews and work. So, what you will see down below the Miwok Village area, all day today, some of you probably woke up to the sound of the chainsaws running. They're using the chainsaws to lift the trees up, to cut the underbrushes grown up since they did the work in there. They're not falling any large trees, they're not doing a massive eradication project, but they are cleaning that up, and you're hearing that because that's in an area where they can't work it with dozers and masticators, so they're going with hand crews. Two strike teams of hand crews, one starting from B Gen, working back towards each other. So, I want to let you know that that's going on. It's very likely that that project will be finished and completed today, and we may not see any of those resources. And as the fire shifts, remember I said wildfires, like by now they're planning, it moves, it's never in the same place. When we start this meeting, it's in one spot, when we end the meeting, it'll be somewhere else. So, as the focus shifts, and as the control lines begin to grow, the threat to our community will diminish, and the threat to the other communities will increase, and so they will begin to shift resources. So, once they get that, once they get that work done, and they're satisfied with it on the shaded fuel break, we'll probably see those resources go away. I doubt if we'll see the strike team of structure groups go, the group engines go away for a day or two, but we probably don't know what the plan is, but I think we'll see that for another couple of days. So, I don't want to frighten you, I just want to let you know that there's work going on. Once the work's completed, they'll put those groups to work somewhere else, they don't take a vacation. Okay, now I'm turning over to Mr. Spin Harney, could you just say a couple words about what you guys are doing, and what we can do to help you?
Good afternoon everybody, my name is Steve Spin Harney. I'm a battalion chief with Cal Fire in the San Pinto Monterey area. Some of you may recognize my last name, if you don't, you might know my parents, Dr. Steven Spin Harney and Mary Spin Harney, who basically had a cabin in a retirement home at the end of Coteo for about 50 years. I'm a local, I learned how to golf at the Miwok pool, I learned how to swim at the Miwok pool, I learned how to ski at Dog Ridge, I worked at Twain Hart Lake, and the very first day I ever spent in my fire service career was the back of a fire engineer at the Miwok volunteers, very first call I ever went on in my career. So, my position in the fire is, my title is the One Way Structure Branch, and what that means basically is I'm in charge of a geographical area and a group of leaders and firefighters that spans basically from Toowomi City all the way up to Pinecrest. So, you can't see it on this map, but I can't be in charge of all those people. There's about, basically, about 20 strike teams of engines, and then five engines per strike team, and water tenders, and hand crews, and bulldozers. So, I can't do that by myself. So, in layman's terms, I'm a finger pointer, and I tell people where to go, and those people tell their folks where to go, and then the guys who are really doing it for you give them all the other guys out on fire engines. So, those are the guys out there, and if things get bad, those are the guys that are continuing to try and defend your homes. So, it's broken up into basically seven geographical areas, and we've started down here, we have Toowomi, then an area we call Sherwood, and an area we call Confidence, an area we call Miwok, an area we call Long Barn, an area we call Cold Springs, and we finish up with Pinecrest. And each one of those areas has what we call a group supervisor. So, I supervise those group supervisors. So, when this incident started, a decision was made by the incident command team, that the fire behavior was such, and close enough, that it warranted an organization of this structure protection branch and that one-way corridor. So, once that decision was made, personnel were picked out, I was assigned to that, we made the decision on how many geographical areas we were going to break into, and we assigned the resources. Now, there were some days where the fire looked really close, and then there are days where the fire looks very far away. The decision was made to put this organization together, bring the engines up to the area, and the whole idea there was, even though it was a little ways off, was for the engine companies who were from all over, all over California, to start orienting themselves with your communities. So, some of these, a lot of these engines and these leaders of these groups have never been here, but 48 hours later, they know this area better than I do. I've had some of those guys taking me to places, I've been up, since I was born, I've been coming here, and they were taking me to places today that I've never been before. So, that shows you about the efforts that they've been putting in to orientate themselves through your area. So, that's what they're here doing, and they're glad to be here, and they love the support they're getting from all of you, and we are going to be here for probably a couple more shifts. There might be, maybe you'll see in a couple days, there's going to be maybe less resources, but that's all based on the success that they're having, taking care of the fire, going direct on the fire line. So, even though we're out here getting ready to defend your homes, this is also defending your homes. The guys that are out in the line with the bulldozers and the hand crews direct on the fire line, that's also a group of guys defending your home. Thank you very much, I'll stick around for a little bit if you have any questions.
I think it's time for Scott. Scott, don't drive it in the middle of the road, appreciate what you're saying, Scott. I think tomorrow, today is the seventh, today is the seventh day, isn't it?
I think so.
I think today's the seventh day that we've done these discussions with since the beginning, really appreciate his input and bring us good news.
All right, let's review what level of evacuation we are right now. We're good, we're feeling really confident about things that are happening. I left this meeting yesterday, the sheriff and I drove down to Toowomi City, we had just received, I think, 60 or 70 new law enforcement officers, mainly from Fresno, Madera, Calaveras, those areas. They were all geared up, ready to go, looked great. We are going to hang onto them for a couple days, just to be sure. I have some great news for our neighbors on the south side. We had that mandatory order over the area Clements Green Ranch at 6 o'clock tonight, that's going to be lifted. Those people will be allowed back in their homes. The area will be repopulated, it's great news. The sheriff's office will remain there to allow, after the order, we only allow residents back in, we just don't want to open it up to a bunch of vacant houses. So, until all the residents are back in there, sheriff's office will remain there. PG&E's volunteered to be there, have crews there, if there's any power issues, they're going to be there to help their residents when they re-enter. And then, fire service up there is going to be up there and assist with any way they can when these people get back to their homes. So, it's great news for those 15, 18 homes down there, and that's directly related to the great job those firefighters did around Kewa. Outstanding job, that's good news, and hopefully we can move that good news up for the next couple days.
I guess I'll fill that thread close, from the, from this force, the Stanislaus force, Fred Wong is the district ranger for the Miwok Ranger District on assignment.
Thanks. You know, I thought maybe I could tell you a little bit about the resources that have been affected out there in the Miwok Ranger District, and kind of a little bit more of the long-range plans for restoration, because you know, I know yesterday we talked a little bit about kind of immediate rehab for the dozer lines and that sort of stuff, staging areas, and I know I talked a little bit about kind of the, what's called the burn area emergency response, which really focuses on trying to stop the excessive erosion, but what about beyond that? What about the trees, what about the vegetation? Well, you know, from the resources that we currently have out there, from the 87 complex fire, we did a lot of tree planting, but tree planting, and so as a result, they're about, about 20 something years old right now, and that, well, they were 20 something years old. But unfortunately, at that stage, they are not high enough off the ground to have the fires go underneath them, and also they were really kind of packed in there as well, so that did not lend itself to avoiding the fire. So, a lot of the plantations, a lot of the areas that we planted in the late 80s, early 90s, have been burnt up and destroyed. Now, there were also some areas that were what we call under contract, where we sold the rights to log those areas. Some of those have been logged, others have not. Some of those have been burnt over, so what we're going to do is probably do some salvage logging as soon as this fire is over, and collect some funds to help do restoration efforts after that. But, it's going to be a really tough, long journey, because what happens out there is if we don't do any plantings, what will happen is a lot of the shrubs will outcompete the trees, and it'll be a really tight conversion from, you know, forested areas to kind of more shrubby areas, and I've seen that in other areas of the nation where there was no tree planting. So, it's going to be a long effort, it's going to be a forest-wide effort. Fortunately, they're not going to abandon Groveland and Miwok, the Stanislaus, they're going to help out as a forest-wide effort to help do some of these plantations. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, I probably, probably should mention a little bit, because we're really, this section right here is the one that just tickles me painfully. As you remember looking at that yesterday, there was a little red line right there, and if it escaped, it was pointed right straight at us. It didn't escape, they controlled it overnight, they've held it all day today, and I'm just tickled pink with that. So, now my focus, because this is really my community, and I'm concerned about Pinecrest, and I'm concerned about Long Barn, and the team is concerned about all of this, but what you will see us talking about in these meetings in the days to come, and we may only have one more meeting depending on how things go tonight, we will have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock here, but depending on how things go between now and then, we may just simply reschedule them back down to the firehouse, or we may schedule them every other day or something, depending on how things go. So, my focus now, and what we're going to be talking about is what happens after the fire, because even though the fire's still going here, we are almost, in our community, we are almost in a position of, okay, now what? The fire's out, now what? We're almost there. I don't want to say we're there yet, but we're getting real close. So, one of the things that you'll see happening is rehab teams, what I would call rehab teams, and they probably have different names from you mentioned than one of the names for, but they're teams of specialists that come in after a major incident like this, and start to reconstruct and rebuild the ground and the fuel, and the, not the fuel, well, it's fuel I guess instead. The native environment, the natural environment, they start to rebuild and get it back to where it should be, and they help nature, and they encourage nature to get back to where it is, slow the erosion down, stop the erosion, work on that kind of stuff. So, I suspect if we don't already have some rehab specialists on board, beginning to work on some of this black line down here, it won't be burned many days, and they'll start showing up. And we'll see that in our community, you may not notice them because they come in early in the morning and pick up, they'll drive down, they'll walk up and down the fuel break, they'll look at it, they'll say, well, we need to do X, Y, and Z, and they'll start working that way. So, we'll see that in the very near future. I think that's all I needed, that's all I wanted to say, so we'll open it up for questions. We're going to do question and answers the same way we did before, if you want to ask a question, raise your hand, we'll get you a microphone, and if you have a microphone, you can ask a question, and we'll all listen.
I have the first question from Marty. You mentioned that they're letting it burn around Hetch Etchy, is that true? And is that a different jurisdiction, and does somebody like to let things burn for the Sequoias to germinate better?
Okay, a lot, a lot of questions there. You're a limited one, no. Right, we, there is some efforts to minimize, to tie this off if we can, we're going to do that, but that's right, there's no, there's no logical control point, no geographic feature that we can get in there safely and cut this thing off, so we're going to have to let it come to us. We fight fire on our own terms, so we're going to have to let that back off right there. And it is in the heart, so it is a different jurisdiction, although we have a delegation of authority to take action in there. As far as the Sequoias go, they've been around a long time, so they're very adapted in that way, especially the big ones can stay in some heat, so although we're doing some efforts to protect some of them, we're pretty confident some of the other ones will do just fine.
Marty, I've got a question for you. I'm right here, right front. It's been noted that we've got drones overhead, how effective have they been, one and two? Why can't we use the military technology that's been available since the 1980s? Load drones up and drop fire retardant from heavy drones?
Okay, we're, how effective have they been? They've been very effective, in fact, yesterday was the first time we had them out, and they did a very good job, in fact, they helped us while we were burning out Division Delta, and we could look at that real time and see what was going on there, and in fact, it picked up some of the spots that happened right when they were occurring, so we were able to work in conjunction with some of our helicopters that were in there, so that worked very well. I'm just going to be honest with you and tell you, I don't know why we don't use some of the other technology, whether there's, I don't know if it's out there, there may be some proprietary issues with the military, I can't speak to that. Me and, I don't know if they make a drone that would carry that much water. Okay, so if they do, I can't answer that question.
I just have a comment of information that the community of Twain Hart is having a dinner at Everson Park tonight at 5:30, sitting and 7 o'clock sitting for anyone on the fire team.
If you got that, that's good. If you didn't give it, we have a notice on our sandwich board at the Miwok Fire Station that has that information, so if you didn't get that down, you can stop and talk to this young lady here on the way out, or just swing by the fire station and that information's on the sandwich board at the firehouse. I'm also going to plug in for the VIPs before I go to the next question. I've got applications for VIPs if you're interested in helping out. I've got application forms here today that I will hand out, go ahead.
I was wondering if you could expand on our conversation earlier about the work going on in Sierra Park, the refueling?
Oh yes, there's, they're building, I think, either refueling or a portable mixing plant at Sierra, at Falls Park, are you, do you have any information on that?
Very, very limited information, it's a very hard field.
I think it's a helicopter.
So, I have not been down there and seen that, but if it is what we call a mixing plant, what that is, is it's a portable retardant mixing base, and how that, that's, has anyone down at Toowomi had a chance to come out of Toowomi and see the mixing base, it's right next to the casino? So, if it's a retardant mixing base, that's what it is. What they do is they take the red retardant that gets dropped out of the air tankers, and they mix it, and they fill a very, very, very large tank with it, and then the very large type one helicopters, the Sikorsky Sky Marines, you also see logging, well, they come right in there and they stick their snorkel down in that, and they suck the retardant out of that, and then they go apply it to the fire. So, their mobile, and the benefit of that is there's very short turnaround, and the retardant works very well, water works well, the retardant works a little bit better, and so it gets the retardant much closer to the operation. So, if that's what that is, and I don't know if it is either, but if that's what it is, it's a retardant mixing base.
I heard about the action going on this morning, and I'm sure it's either just a refueling point or a portable retardant mixing base, and one of the reasons they would want to do that is, excuse me, if you look at the map, right now, a lot of the fire activity, or fire fighting activities taking place here, if they're up here in this corner, and they fly along to Sierra Village, which is just barely off this map, that's a much shorter turnaround than flying all the way down here to Toowomi and back. So, they're doing that, the reason it's portable is so they can put it closer to where the work is, so that's probably why they're setting it up at that location, because it's a safe place, it's not around a developed community, in the sense that there's a lot of other traffic, or looky-loos that get in the way and that might hinder the helicopter operations, and it's closer to where they're actually doing the work.
Next question.
Is North Toowomi and regular Toowomi Road, up north, is open now, is it?
Yes, that's another piece of good news, we were able to open North Toowomi Road the entire stretch, except for Pond and Rosa Hills is still closed to residents only. Toowomi Road, we're open all the way down to Cherry Valley Boulevard where the clinic sits up the corner, so we're open all the way, but we are, Toowomi City's still exposed to residents and law enforcement firefighters.
Thank you, I'm Joseph Di Colapo, resident of Sherwood Forest. First of all, I want to thank you guys for a fine job you did, thank you for this meeting, this is the first one I've been up to up here. Question is, since they're doing more burnout, just to kind of get everybody acclimated here, do we expect to see more smoke, less smoke, just so we know what we're looking for? Thank you.
Okay, good question, yep. Definitely, for the short period of time in the future, we definitely have some pretty good sizable blocks to burn out. Most of the smoke generation in this area is pretty much complete, or will be complete by today, but when we start moving up here, you should expect to see some pretty good smoke generation in here. That's not always bad, so, okay.
If we're doing, if they're doing a firing operation, and it goes well, you will likely see a column of smoke going up. So, just because you see a column of smoke, that looks pretty, you know, pretty intense, and you see helicopter activity, that doesn't mean it's a bad thing, if you said that. It could be that that's exactly what they planned, the helicopters will fly in support of the burning operation to help pick up any spots that get across the line, or just slow it down, if it begins to get a little bit too intense, they'll draw a little water on it to slow it down. So, just because you see long, big columns of smoke, and helicopters, or even air tankers, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Really what you want, what you want to pay attention to is, does it look like where you're seeing the smoke, is it where they, where they told us they were going to do the burning? If you see it some other place, then yeah, let's find out about it.
Marty, could you outline again from St. Toowomi City up through Long Barn, where the fire line is, and where you have, what you're comfortable with, security lines, fire lines?
Okay, well, if y'all can see it then, it pretty much shows here, this black line, that's a paper cabin ridge that goes down in the Toowomi River, and carries around there here, and you can see right here on this dozer line, this is what they're firing out today and trying to finish up by tonight, so this will be the actual line, and right in here is where we expect to hold it the next time, right up in here, and we're looking for an alternate route to tie it in here somewhere. Again, this is that, that section of fire that's slopped over into the Klavian, the Hol Creek drainages, and there's no roads up here, there's nothing to hold this fire, so we're having to pull back here, and we're looking for alternate control points here and here. Again, we want to hold the fire on this road right up here. We have this a little bit taken care of, but this is our expected northern containment line at this point.
That is a big one.
It is at this point, yes.
For the community, the community has donated a lot of hundred dollars to Alicia's Sugar Shaft to feed the firefighters at 6 o'clock in the morning, and so if anyone wants to add to that, Alicia would be happy to take your money and feed the guys.
The ARPD and the FBI, I was there about 6:30 this morning, and she said she'd already had, I don't know, 70 or 80 firefighters come through there, so they're doing a brisk business. Let's do two more questions, because I think we're going to finish for today, but again, we will meet again tomorrow here. If you know what the fire does, and the interest from the community, that may be our last meeting in this format for this purpose, but we'll play it by ear and we'll let you know tomorrow for sure. But again, tomorrow here at 4 o'clock, I'll be here, if you come, we'll have a meeting. Next question.
Marty, how much closer is the fire to our area from yesterday?
I can answer that. It's so closer.
Yeah.
We're reporting to Division Delta, they're going, it's going to be made, does Long Barn and Pinecrest have to worry about that more than we do, or where does that fire go, it's racing through Division Delta?
Okay, yep, no, we, we got pretty good confidence again, a lot of these are roads, so we're expecting, just like down here, you got a plan and you work your plan, so we're really focusing a lot of efforts on making these really enforceable control lines, and we're even actually looking out ahead, we're not doing any work right up here very much, but we are scouting even further to the north off this map, so again, we do a great job of planning not only two days, three days, we're looking four, five days out if we need to, we got to be prepared for this thing. We're not, we got it down, we're going to put a stake in it somewhere.
Just a comment, at 3:50, I was down in the bottom of Miwok, and Steve's crews, structure teams are cruising it, Cal Fire's down there living, just the first camp report to all my neighbors, my background, sitting with Steve's, I've been up there since '69, Dad and the police, Long and Fire Department, so we appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I just want to let my neighbors know that it's actually, what these guys say is what's going on.
Thank you. I want to thank all the firefighters and the incident duty team and the leadership they've provided. I'm not on the fire, I'm at all the fire I'm not a fire guy. I'm not attached to the fire. I'm not assigned to the fire. I don't have any fire to fight. So I couldn't find anything else to do except hold a meeting. So here we are, here we have been. Thank you all for coming. But really, I want to thank the firefighters for it. I wish that we're all here today.